I appreciate your patience this evening. Got wrapped up with our closed session there. Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dixon Faber?
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Gitchry and Dr. Roundtree? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dixon Faber?
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to readmit Student A?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dixon Faber?
Motion carries. Our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside 30 minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers we get to address the board. I will call each speaker up by name in the order in which they are signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in. The first speaker is Gwen Ogul, followed by Matthew Erickson.
Good evening. My name is Gwen Ogul and I live at 2813 Tall Oaks Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of our daughter, a student at Blacksburg High School. Without sharing too many personal details of her condition, our daughter suffers from a complex medical diagnosis. I'm happy to share the details in a private setting to respect her privacy. As the stress of school exacerbated her condition, we pulled her out in early March with medical guidance. Jessica Muniz, Dr. Bregan, and Dr. Walker all assured us there is a way forward. We were given options that we already made clear would not work, such as virtual Virginia, alternative schools, and home-based learning. I'm happy to discuss the reasons why these won't work for our daughter in a private conversation. We have two older children who both graduated from Blacksburg High School and are now in college. It was never our family's intention to homeschool, but we find ourselves searching for an option that lets our daughter heal and thrive. We specifically asked Dr. Bregan and Dr. Walker to consider whether our daughter can be homeschooled and attend one or two Blacksburg High School courses, or alternatively, could she be remain a Blacksburg High School student attending part-time while simultaneously being homeschooled, and would Blacksburg High School accept her homeschool transcripts towards graduation? Dr. Walker called to say that after talking with Ms. Muniz, Dr. Bregan, and the Director of Secondary Education, they would not ask the board to revisit MCPs's policy on homeschool students attending MCPs schools. Supplementing MCPs courses with homeschooling will allow us to work with our daughter's needs while earning a standard diploma. Solely attending school risks continued aggravation of her condition. We want our daughter to maintain a connection with her high school community. Exclusively homeschooling her risks rendering her socially isolated. The only class we are currently requesting is access to the Unified PE course, where she has friends and an amazing teacher. Here's what you need to know. As of 2017, 66 of the 132 counties in Virginia are open to homeschoolers on a part-time basis. Others allow consideration on a case-by-case basis. A 1997 law was passed that gives school systems access to funds from the state of Virginia for homeschooled students attending part-time. These students count towards the average daily attendance, meaning MCPs is missing out on money that it could be getting from homeschooled students attending our schools. Homeschoolers bring diversity of thought, experience, and perspective. Your mission statement reads, "MCPs is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion." In line with the MCPs's belief number 10, "Learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community," I'm asking the school board to revisit the current policy that excludes homeschoolers from attending MCPs schools part-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogul. Next up is Ms. Ozborn. Next up is Matthew Erickson, followed by Wendy Baldwin.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Hudson and members of the board. My name is Matthew Erickson, and I live in Blacksburg. I am the father of a rising fourth grader, a rising second grader, and the most excited soon-to-be kindergartner that you will ever have the opportunity to meet. I come before you tonight to express my opposition to the expansion of standards-based learning, or standards-based grading, rather, in elementary schools. While I believe that this can be appropriate, especially for early grades in elementary schools, one key drawback of standards-based grading is the lack of more meaningful information about a student's performance. I believe this is especially problematic for higher-achieving students. In theory, I know that standards-based grading includes both a meets expectations and an exceeds expectations option. However, our personal family experience suggests that for the vast majority of students, meets expectations ends up being the highest mark that is assessed. Indeed, when we've acquired concerning why certain grades are meets expectations, we've simply been told that that's where the assessment stops, and that there is no ability to earn and exceeds expectations for a wide variety of subjects, including in many core areas such as math or reading. As a result, our family greatly enjoyed the transition to a more numeric-style grading in third grade. It's given us a lot more information about our daughter's performance. While a seventy and a ninety-five may both technically meet expectations, they certainly convey vastly different information about a student's performance, and this has allowed us to more carefully target areas where our daughter may benefit from improvement at home. So ultimately, why I believe the best option would be to refrain from expanding standards-based grading. In the alternative, given that I know there is a drive in that direction, I would urge you all to more closely monitor how this is actually implemented and make sure that the ability to earn the full range of one through four, from severely below, barely below, meets and exceeds expectations, are actually implemented across all of the different rubrics that are assessed. I would encourage you to gather data to see how often in practice those standards are being followed through, and whether or not that is actually occurring. So in conclusion, this is why I oppose the expansion of standards-based grading in elementary schools, and I thank you very much for your time and attention, and for all that you do for our county, for our students, and for everyone involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Wendy Baldwin, followed by Lauren Sheeler.
Good evening, Dr. Bregan, school board members, faculty, and staff. I'm Wendy Baldwin. I live in Blacksburg, Virginia, and I'm the Executive Director of the Imagination Library for Montgomery County. We are an all-volunteer organization, an affiliate of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and a project of the Mount Tabor Ruirtan Club. The Imagination Library is a longstanding program established in nineteen-ninety-five by Dolly Parton in Seaver County, Tennessee. It's now in more than fifty counties in Virginia. Many states have statewide programs, and in several countries. Each child who is enrolled in the Imagination Library gets a free, age-appropriate book each month in the mail every year until they turn five. It's an amazing program. This gift from Dolly helps encourage reading at home, to develop the love of books, and establish pre-literacy skills, like how to hold a book, turn a page, and be excited to sit and listen to a story. Enrollment is simple. It's just the child's age, mailing address, and date of birth. There are no other requirements, and the books are all free. We've had considerable success with this program. We got our nonprofit status at the end of December. We've raised enough money to begin enrolling by the end of February, and we have now enrolled twelve-hundred children. So in fifteen weeks, we have gotten ourselves to where the Dollywood Foundation thought we would be in fifteen months. Tonight, the school board will hear a presentation about the division's literacy plan, and the Imagination Library is included as a component. I hope MCPS will consider making a donation, a financial contribution, to the Imagination Library, as well as helping us in other non-financial ways, like collaborating on enrollment activities or on graduation programs, when the five-year-olds make that transition to kindergarten. A series of activities like this could help us, and it could help MCPS meet their family engagement requirements for Title I funds. All funds that are donated to the Imagination Library of Montgomery County go to buying books. We have no overhead. The Dollywood Foundation selects the books, negotiates with the publisher, maintains the book list, mailing, and ships the books. All we do is enroll children and raise money to pay for the books with some contribution from the Commonwealth. There are approximately four thousand eligible children, and we expect to reach seventy to eighty percent of them in the next few years. Once we reach that goal, it will cost us forty thousand dollars a year. That will be a stable figure. The Imagination Library can help.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lauren Sheeler, followed by Kimberly Williamson.
Good evening. Very short. My name is Lauren Sheeler. I live in Reiner, and my son Sawyer just finished his kindergarten year at Auburn Elementary. Because I believe in the value of publicly highlighting the amazing work of our teachers and staff, I just want to take a few moments to tell you about his school year. Sawyer has Down Syndrome, and over the last few years, I've honestly been really nervous about him starting school. If you're a parent raising a child with a disability, you know that the world is not always kind to our children, and not every school across our country is eager to welcome students with disabilities into their mainstream classrooms and create a meaningfully inclusive environment. We want our kids to feel included, but more than that, we really want them to feel like they belong in their classrooms, in their peer groups, and in their school as a whole. I was really nervous, but I'm so thankful to say that I've been blown away by the way that Sawyer's year unfolded at Auburn Elementary. From the moment he walked into school on his first day until the last bell rang a couple weeks ago, he has been celebrated and loved by everyone at his school. Sawyer's kindergarten teacher, Courtney Hall, set a bar for inclusive education for me that will forever serve as my guide for what a rich education should look like for my child. She was always thinking two steps ahead to help him feel supported and comfortable. She took time to really understand what makes him excited to learn and gave him so many opportunities to be a leader in her classroom. Being chosen to be a lunch line leader or a morning meeting helper may not really mean much to most parents, but it means everything to me as the mom of a child who's often been unnoticed throughout his life. In Courtney's classroom, Sawyer was always seen and valued. Sawyer's paraprofessionals, Lori Duncan and Tanya White, have poured so much love and care into him this year. They've wholeheartedly believed in his abilities. They've lovingly accommodated every need that he has, and they've truly become like part of our family. Mary Richardson, Sawyer's sped case manager, came up with endless creative ways to support his learning needs, and I really appreciate her. Every single person at Sawyer's school knows his name, and that doesn't happen by accident. It happens because there's a culture of belonging that's been created there, starting with Mrs. Regus and Mrs. Holly, and flowing down to every single person in the building. So in conclusion, something I'm really gleaning from his kindergarten year is this. There's a difference between acceptance and belonging. Acceptance is great. We all want our kids to be accepted, but simply being accepted doesn't automatically equate to feeling like you belong in a place. So in a world where I've often had to fight for my child just to be noticed, Auburn Elementary gave us a place where he knows without a shadow of a doubt that he belongs somewhere. This year really has been a precious gift to my family, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to every single person who played a part in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheeler. Next up is Kimberly Williamson.
Kimberly Williamson from Christiansburg. One of the deepest cries of my heart is for the awakening of students, staff, administration, and families to the devastation that man's made-up ideologies have had on our young people overall, and for the awakening to the truth that the way of God, our Creator, made us to function, is the only way to healthy, successful living. That way is found in Jesus and His Word, the original foundation of our government and our education. America is a prodigal nation, as described in the Bible, but Father God is longing to embrace us as we come to our senses and return to Him. The younger of two sons came to his father and said, "Father, don't you think it's time to give me my share of your estate?" He was thinking he knew how to live better than his father's way. Shortly afterward, the younger son packed up everything and traveled to a far-off land where he soon wasted all he was given, in a binge of extravagant and reckless living. With nothing left in a famine in that land, he grew hungry, so he begged a farmer to hire him, who then sent him out to feed the pigs. The son was famished and even willing to eat the slop given to the pigs. Humiliated, the son finally woke up and thought, "There are many workers at my father's house who have all the food they want. They lack nothing. Why am I here, dying of hunger, feeding these pigs and eating their slop? I will go back to my father and say to him, 'Father, I was wrong. I have sinned against you. I am not worthy to be called your son. Please, Father, just treat me like one of your employees.'" So the son started for home. From a long distance away, his father saw him coming, and great compassion swelled up in his heart for his son who was returning home. The father raced out to meet him, swept him up in his arms, hugged him dearly, and kissed him over and over with tender love. Then the son said, "Father, I was wrong. I have sinned against you. I don't deserve to be called your son. Just let me be..." The father interrupted and said, "Son, you're home now." Turning to his servants, the father said, "Quick, bring me the best robe, my very own robe, for his shoulders. Bring the ring for his finger, the seal of sonship. And bring out the best shoes for my son you can find. Prepare a great feast for celebration, for my beloved son was once dead, but now he's alive. Once he was lost, but now he is found, and everyone celebrated with overflowing joy. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be satisfied."
Okay, thank you. And with that, a public address is closed. Okay, next up is consent items. No one wishes to move an item out of consent? We will consider these items approved.
I don't want to move anything, but just want to acknowledge the forty-one thousand nine hundred dollars from the Christ Episcopal Church to help pay for school lunch debt. That's wonderful.
Board, anyone else? We had one of those donations a couple months back as well, which we should have acknowledged, certainly. I apologize for that, but definitely want to say thank you to that one, and certainly to Crest Episcopal Church as well. That makes a huge difference towards our students, towards our budget. Certainly, as we've all been monitoring, we're hoping this problem gets solved at a state level, so we never have to worry about that again, but certainly appreciate the generosity of our community. Okay, great. Next up, do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented? So moved. Dr. Gitchry and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion carries. Now we arrive to our business meeting, and we'll start with the report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. I only got a few things to report. First is that our summer academies are in full swing as they enter into their second week, and we appreciate all dedicated staff and teachers working with our students to provide them this enrichment and support over these summer months. Camp Invention is currently taking place this week at Falling Branch Elementary School, and we're happy to report we have over a hundred and fifty students participating in this science and innovation discovery-oriented camp. It's really exciting to see the children and the enthusiasm that's going on over there. Christiansburg High School construction project is progressing nicely, and I typically ask one question only when I talk about that, is it still slated to open on August of 2026? And we're still on track to do that. It's exciting that we have our live-stream camera. It's now working, and it's on the website, so you can see the live-action progress of what's taken place, and over time, we're going to archive those, so you get to see that as it progresses, and we're excited about that. We also got numerous other capital projects taking place throughout the summer to enhance the facilities, ensure they're ready for our staff and students in August. HVAC things, parking, interior renovations, hallways, bathrooms, classrooms, and things like that, that sometimes we take for granted, but I just wanted to point out that we're really grateful that the monies were dedicated for those capital improvements and for our staff coordinating all those efforts to make sure we have appropriate learning environments for our children. And lastly, you'll see on the agenda tonight, as the board had instructed me a few months ago, to work with our team to put a cellphone policy in place. That's on the agenda tonight for a first read, and in discussion that comes after that, and we look forward to creating an environment for our children, where at least for portions of their school day, and they're with us, they'll be free from that distraction. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Board Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bregan. And our first item after that is the cellphone use policy first read. The administration will present the Montgomery County Public Schools' cellphone use policy for review and discussion. The policy will be brought back for approval on June eighteenth. Who's leading that discussion?
Do you want me to present it and just kind of go over basically what we have set up there? Basically, what the policy is, is it's restricting the cellphone use, and we call, use the term cellphone to refer to any connected device, earbuds, smartwatch, earbuds, smartwatches, and other things like that during the time the kids are in the school day. And it was somewhat piloted this year at Christiansburg Middle School, and it met with a lot of success and a lot of positive feedback from staff and actually from students and from parents as well. Took a little bit of time to get acclimated and get initiated, and sometimes the first couple of days, there were more cellphones that were taken, but over time, that reduced to basically nothing, and as kids and staff began to accept the policy. Some of the things that we did, including this policy, were exceptions for students that may need them for medical reasons, such as diabetes monitoring and other things like that, that necessitate constant contact either with a physician or with their parents and things like that, so obviously that would be an exception. One of the things that the administration talked about was, could you put directly in there what some of the consequences would be? And we kind of, I don't want to say briefly. We defined it, but we didn't get to very specific. The first offense is obviously, take the phone. It's not that significant. Second offense is a little more significant, and then if there's a third offense, you go all the way up to the progressive disciplinary actions, but we didn't say exactly what that would be, because it depends on the situation, grade level of student, so on and so forth. We're looking to get, if the board moves forward with this, a second read for the next meeting, get the information out to our communities as quickly as we can, and hopefully try to model the model that the staff member did for Christiansburg Middle School, and getting the information out there in a way that the students would be easily digestible. I'm open for discussion or comments or anything?
Great, thank you. Board, any questions or comments?
So I'll start. So when we talk about unschooled property and school-sponsored activities, so does that include buses?
We didn't put it on the buses, because I'm not sure we'd be able to monitor that, and that puts an undue burden on the drivers when they're trying to drive the buses, sometimes with seventy kids on it. So that would not include buses as it's written here.
Okay. Well, I'm proponent, if we need to get some aids, then we need to have them off the buses too, because we had just as much issues happening on the buses as we do inside the buildings. So athletic events, school-sponsored, how's that work?
It would be the events that are taking place at the school, after-school activities, athletic events, where the kids are going to be in the gym, watching a basketball game or volleyball game or something like that.
So football games, soccer games, outdoor, track.
That would probably be harder to enforce, you know?
But if we want to be equitable.
Understood. We could look at that.
And consequences. For consistency reasons, I would like to see something that says, "This is how, this is what's going to happen." I don't want it happening, not happening in this building, something different happening over here. We need to be consistent with whatever we're doing. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go around. Dr. Roundtree, any comments, questions? Dr. Roundtree, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I do have concerns about the, the sporting events and other extracurricular activities. Just the, in some of those events, students may be wanting to, to take pictures and whatnot, and cellphones are commonly cameras these days. And then, it's not clear, let's see, after the second offense, do parents have to pick up the cellphone, or is it given back to the students? I know at CMS, I think it was that the parents had to pick it up.
Just checking exactly what it says there. We didn't, we didn't specifically specify that.
Right.
And, and as I read, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I think that, that adds an increase in level of discipline if the parents have to pick it up from, after the first offense. That was the only two things I had.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Purcell?
I think that scaling this program for high school is a little more complicated than, than at the middle school level. And I think the high school students need, might need a little extra layer of buy-in. Can you speak specifically, perhaps, to any plans for dealing with that population?
Yeah, I'm sure at every level, it would be a different rollout and things like that. We didn't get into specifics with the administration, but we will do that as we move forward, because I agree with you, it's very different when you're looking at an elementary school as opposed to our high school, and the expectation for the kids and the communication. Just on one, if I could clarify, Board Hudson.
Yep.
The, the ban is during the school day activities that are school-sponsored, so it wouldn't be for after-school athletics. I misspoke on that. That's not how it's written in there. It's if there's an activity going on during the school day, whether it's on or off school grounds. The expectation is that you will not have your cellphone in use.
So like an assembly or?
Assembly, a field trip, something outside where the VT kids come and working with some of our younger kids and doing stuff, you know, any kind of activity like that. But not per se, an after-school athletic event. That was, I misspoke.
That makes sense. Talk about the buses being hard to, to police.
Yeah.
Good luck at a football game, right? Ms. Parton?
So I've been waiting for this for a long time. I think it's a great thing. Some parents and students will probably disagree, but this, the feedback that I've gotten has been extremely positive, surprisingly, from the students, who didn't think it was going to be a lot of fun, but have since made it a point to come tell me that their life has gotten a lot less stressful, which I think is going to, in turn, take care of a lot of other issues that we're having as far as their mental health goes, a lot of the mental health, because a lot of the phone is basically social media-based. And so, you know, it'd be great if they used the phone for what a phone was supposed to be used for, to like actually call and talk to someone, but we don't know what a phone call is anymore. So I think I commend Mr. Knott on, on how they handled it at CMS, and it apparently was a great success. I do think we probably are going to have a little harder time convincing our high school kids of it, but I think once they realize that they can adapt and live, so to speak, without their cellphone and find other ways and means to communicate, which will be beneficial to them and us, I think it will be a very good thing in the long run. So I, as parents, I'd like to ask parents to please help us with this, because we're going to need your help with this. And I do think, Dr. Roundtree, I agree with you on having the parents come pick up the phone, because I think that would make more of an impact than just giving it back to the student just to start out with the fact of how serious we are about this, and hopefully it will help in making the parents' lives easier, as well as the students', as well as our whole administration. So overall, I think it's a great thing. I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. Dr. Gitchry?
Great, thank you. Thanks to the administration for working on, on this policy. I'm in full support of it. A few things. So is the intention in the next read to amend 761? Because right now, we do have a, a policy on cellphone, and this is separate. So I'd like to see it folded into the school board policy and amend that section of the school board policy, so it doesn't create a conflict. That's, that's the first thing I'd, I'd recommend.
Are you referring to Dr. Gitchry, the code of conduct? I don't know, I'm all by number. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
The second is, I'd like to, to echo the suggestion, a couple of other board members, that the parents pick up the cellphone after, or the second offense. I was visiting a friend last year in Chicago, and they have a cellphone ban. It led to a family conversation when they had, the parents had to go pick up, and it definitely had a different effect. The third, I'm a little uncomfortable with the vagueness of, of that, the third offense and subsequent. I feel like a, a policy should be specific. I don't know how, how that might be addressed, but it's, it's, it's a little too vague for, for, for my comfort. The other thing is, you know, I had suggested talking to Professor Shu, who's a leading expert on disability and technology. I, I don't know if that happened, but I'd, I'd recommend, recommend not just referring to it as a medical exception, because there are lots of students with disabilities, and I'd like broader language, and to see that acknowledged, that mobile devices are used for lots of purposes that aren't just medical, that are still necessary and part of accommodations. So I like to see the language of accommodations rather than medical, just medical use. But otherwise, I think this is, this is a step in the right direction. So I applaud the efforts.
Great, thank you. I had two, I had two points as well. Dr. Gitchry touched on the one in terms of accommodations for five-to-four students and others. I think there's definitely something to be looked for there. I know students who have used, you know, the stress, the chaos of being in a loud environment, and calming sounds are going to help, right? So something to consider. And what about bathrooms? Like how, how many students are we going to have grabbing their phones, trying to go to the bathroom all day long in order to use a phone? How are we going to police that?
Not sure.
Okay, cool.
I mean, obviously, kids are kids, right? And they're going to try to work every wrinkle that's possible, so that's something we'd have to look at. And I want to stop them from vaping in the bathrooms first, but
True.
that could be an issue, you know, if we, unless we actually confiscated the phones and put them in a place, and I'm not sure we can go down that road with a, you pick some of the bigger high schools, over 1,000 kids every day, where we, that would even be manageable, right? So I don't know.
Okay. And I like the practicality of this approach. I like, you know, there is kind of a self-policing aspect of it, and, you know, as opposed to investing in pouches. I know we've talked about a bunch of different stuff over the time, and the cost, the management of those kind of things, and, you know, in the case of emergency, you know, the phones are still there, right? But it's really just going to be the, you know, the managing of that throughout the day. I, I assume that also includes over lunch, like, like that's what, that's what CMS did, right? So that's another time where a lot of students congregated together. It's going to be hard to, hard to police that, right? But, you know, I also think that, just like CMS did, we, we try it, we enforce it, and, and, and hopefully, it's going to work out.
All right.
It's good stuff in the right direction, for sure.
I, I will take the feedback, and we'll tweak it and bring it back. If there's any other feedback, if you could reach out to me directly, and we'll share with the administrative team. We'll make those changes that you all suggested, and come back on June 18.
Good, great. Do your mic, Penny, I'm sorry.
All right.
Thanks.
The training for our staff, what does that look like? Or is it on a case-by-case basis when it comes to, you know, medical emergencies and situations like that?
Well, just how, how best to do it, right? How best to implement it? How best to deal with children when you notice that they're violating the policy, and just kind of go over all those expectations and what we would expect you to do, so that we don't escalate a situation, and we want to de-escalate it, and maybe not make an accusation of someone that has a right due to an accommodation or a medical device, how just to deal with all those things. Exactly what that'll look like today, right now, we don't know, because we want to get the policy out there first, and then we'll set it up with our administrative team. And we got time over the summer to put all this in place.
Could we possibly, I'm sorry, Ms. Franklin, could we possibly get that information from parents at the beginning of school? And that way, we could have a list of, some kind of a list of the kids that either medically or, you know, they can show proof of a need possibly for the phone, then we would have a list already there to refer to, maybe? Would that make it easier?
I'm sure our principals will know that, yeah. Put something in place so the teachers know, so, you know, so-and-so has the ability, because he needs it, so, you know, if you see him, don't really approach him, make an issue out of it, or whatever. Absolutely.
So, I'm sorry. With the enforcement piece, again, I have concern about consistency. And in the classroom, where the teacher's going to run into having to enforce this, making sure that it is enforced. And how does this work? It's one thing if we take the phone away, because they've had it out, but if we have situations where the children become, let's just say, disrespectful in that process, you know, that's to be raising things to a different level. Just a thought.
No, I agree with you. And, and, you know, those are some of the things we talk about training, and how do you deal with when someone's in defiance of the rule, where it doesn't escalate the situation? And I don't expect anyone to be pulling phones off of children or doing that with kids, because sometimes, my own kids included, would be defiant on those issues. And then, then that's a different behavior issue, right? That's not a cellphone violation. That's noncompliance to what a request from an administrator or teacher was, and that would be dealt with differently. But we want to let our people know how to do that in a way that's, again, de-escalating, not escalating a situation.
And as the new school year comes on, is, are there plans to send out emails to let parents and students know about the, the new implementation of the policy?
Oh, 100%. Yeah, we would want to blanket this everywhere, get it out there. And again, CMS did a nice job in modeling that behavior, gave a lot of advance notice, kind of made it humorous for the children. I think they did a great job, and would like to do something similar to that.
Two other things. One, so you told us that it worked really well at CMS. What didn't work in the pilot? Because I'm sure it wasn't flawless. Was there anything that we should know of in that pilot where, or is it already incorporated here? I'm, I'm curious.
I'm trying to think what really didn't work. I did hear, it took a, a week to get in, for kids to get acclimated to it, right? First couple of days were a little hectic, and probably a lot more volume in, in the administrative office than you would have liked, but then it kind of got rolling out. The communication was really good. Some of the things that we heard from the other administrators, and some of that was there, like, as Ms. Franklin and some people said, "Don't leave a lot of gray area." You know, and that's might be why it was a little too harsh in what we said about medical exceptions. And your point was well taken, Dr. Gitchry, that there's other exceptions. But the, the administrators and the staff, if you give too many exceptions, and then everybody, then it's hard to enforce it universally, is, which I think we all agree is important, right? Except for those exceptions that need to take place. So that, that's the only things that I heard initially. But we, we'll see what it's like when we do it with 9,700 kids, right? As opposed to, you know, one school, one middle school. And like any change, there'll be bumps in the road, and we'll figure it out.
And the second is, I know, if, if I'm recalling correctly, that some of the divisions that have, have worked with students with disabilities have either, they've either put something on the phone or given them something so the students feel empowered, so that they're not getting asked, like, if, there's something in place where it's not just reliant upon that individual interaction and having to defend it, to make it as easy as possible. Because one of the things I noticed here in the medical exception is, I, I understand you, I don't want to make it so easy, but I'd like to see it so it's a little easier, the burden isn't high for students with disabilities.
That's fair. Absolutely.
You have one comment to, to Dr. Gitchry's first question there. You want advantage that we will have theoretically advantages. We're starting at, starting at the beginning of the school year, right? CMS rolled that out kind of mid-year, which is impressive that it went as smoothly as it did, considering, you know, students didn't start the school with that expectation to change, right? So hopefully, fingers crossed, you know, if you do it at the beginning, we communicate throughout the summer effectively, you know, all, all the cool things we're going to do there. Hopefully, that makes a difference. We'll see. Now, great, Board, any other comments?
Yeah, I still think it should be no phones on the buses.
Okay. No. I mean, I do think, you know, yeah.
We'll look at it.
I don't disagree.
The enforcement thing is hard.
The enforcement's harder, right?
I think we would have to have permanent aides on the bus for help with that. We definitely would have to have someone monitoring that other than the bus driver.
We have to have that anyway. So it may not be that we can do every bus every day, but include buses so that our students understand not on the buses. And, you know, I hate to say it, but kind of go from there and figure it out. If we have a bus where there are lots of offenses, then, yeah, our bus drivers are there to get our children to and from, so school's safe and home, but concentrate on where there are real issues, if that's where we want to go with it first, you know, see how it goes.
Okay. Okay, Board, anything else? Thank you, Dr. Bragan, for, for bringing that and for that discussion. All right, next up, regarding the fiscal year-end. The school board has in the past authorized the superintendent or their designee to review and approve the payment of the final June invoices. The July invoices are included in this request, since there are no school board meetings scheduled between June 18th and July 30th, 2024. This will allow us to pay personnel and vendors in a timely manner. Do I have a motion to authorize the superintendent or designee to review and approve payment of the final June invoices from the FY 2023-24 year and July invoices from FY 2024-25 appropriated budgets? So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Dr. Gitchry, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, can I please, please call the roll?
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor?
Motion carries. Next up, the proposed 2024-25 committee membership for the Gifted Advisory Committee is presented for the board's approval. Helen Fatinos, Administrator of Gifted Programs, is available for any questions or concerns.
Any questions or concerns about that?
Any questions, Board? Anybody want to start?
I'll start with one. Good evening.
Good evening.
So looking at the, I know that there's a breakdown by community and then some basic demographics. I know one of the critiques in the past is that there was an over-representation of MCPS employees, not just administrators, but also teachers who were also being counted as parents.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm curious of, of the membership here.
Of the voting members?
Yeah, the voting members. How many of them are parents who don't work for MCPS? And I'm, I should clarify and say, I'm not opposed to pair, people being both parents and working for MCPS and being on the committee, but just making sure that there's that independence.
Absolutely. Just counting. Emily Stanley, who's our secretary, is a teacher. Jennifer McGee is a teacher. And Katie Schendel is a parent and a teacher. So the voting members, two are staff members that do not have current identified children, and one is a staff and parent.
Okay, so the voting members, the majority are not MCPS employees?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Board, any more questions or comments?
I appreciate the continuous reporting of the makeup of the committee, and I'll just encourage, again, to keep trying.
Yes, ma'am. I, every day, I try harder. I, and again, I am open to any suggestions, areas to recruit. I think in my next, in my next line item here, some of the initiatives that I'm hoping to pilot this coming year will provide more parent-community contact, which I think will increase our possibility of recruiting more diverse members. So I'm, I'm hopeful for the future.
Okay. So this just crossed my mind.
Yeah, yeah. I brought my Yeah, I brought my pen to take notes.
So. If we don't have as many minority students being identified as gifted, which means that will limit the pool of resources. Are we making sure we're looking at that also?
Yes, I can jump into that now or you can wait for my pretty slide and then I can tell you. My my hopes for. Creating a more equitable screening process so that we can make sure every student has a level playing field as they enter the screening process. Which would then hopefully increase the number of minority students participating in the gifted program.
Well, I got another question, but I'll wait for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Board, any other questions, comments? Dr. Roundtree, your mic is on, just making sure that was. Okay, cool. Okay, great. Then do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty five committee membership of the gifted advisory committee as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Dr. Getchy. Any? Any more discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchy?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, the gifted identification process for MCPS will be presented by Helen Fatinos, administrator of gifted programs. This is a presentation, no action expected.
Thank you all again for approving this. This is gonna allow approving the GSC membership now will allow us to get started on our work sooner this coming year, so appreciate that. And thank you for the opportunity to share some information about our current students and our gifted identification process. Tasha, am I doing this or you? I have four things I'd like to share with you tonight, three of which are required by the gifted plan to share with you. So based on the requirements of the plan, I would like to share with you sort of our screening data for this year. The secondary courses offered, the professional development offered, and then per your request, I will also offer information about the gifted identification process. So first off, our screening data. Every student grades K to eight is screened every year using multiple measures, including the Hope Teacher Rating Scale. MAP data and other school-based data. So you can see here in twenty twenty three, twenty four, six hundred, six thousand three hundred and seventy five students were screened. In the fall, eighty were found were flagged for referral, which means they were moved forward in our process. And sixty of those students were found eligible. Six of those students, we were placed on monitor process. Monitor status because we felt like we just needed to collect some more data from them. In the spring, we moved sixty nine students forward for referral. Sixty two of those were found eligible and six of those students were. Placed on monitor status. So you can see the percentage of students that were moved forward through the process and then identified. And then broken down a little bit further, I just wanted to share the students that were flagged for referral. This number differs slightly from if you added eighty and sixty nine together because this number includes transfer students that came in in the fall. That's a different process, but. Of those students, just highlighting the students with disabilities that were flagged for referral, our students, LEP students, and then a breakdown of the ethnicity of the students that were flagged for referral. Next up, secondary courses. This is a lot of data. I learned how to make pivot tables so that it would be more manageable for you. I was very proud of myself for doing that. I know for some people that is an easy thing for me. That was new learning. But this is just a breakdown of all the students across the middle schools and high schools in AP honors. Type classes, DE classes, and then of those, how many were identified gifted and how many are not. It's a little bit difficult for me to interpret just because students are double counted in a lot of those classes because they're taking lots of them, but you can kind of see. How many of our gifted students are in those higher level classes because that is where we are serving our students at that secondary level. And then finally, for professional development this year, all teachers K to eight participated in the training for the Hope Teacher Scales. Gifted resource teachers provided targeted professional development to seventy elementary school teachers and forty six middle school teachers monthly. And then this year, we launched a critical and creative thinking skills. Communication for our teachers and for our families and those newsletters are linked there for you to look at. And GRTs at BMS and CMS were invited to present these at faculty meetings. Otherwise, the. Information was just sent out to teachers by email and then met individually per teacher's requests. This coming year, we do have a professional learning series. Queued up for all teachers to be able to participate in and in person and virtually. Do you want to ask any questions about those first three items before I move on to the ID process or should I keep going?
I'm waiting.
Keep going. So the identification process for MCPS. This is our timeline. So every student, as I've stated before, is screened annually using those Hope Teacher Scales. MAP data, planned experiences. That's when gifted resource teachers push into classrooms and do targeted lessons. That happens mostly in second grade and then other school-based data that we can pull, for instance, PALS data or. The data from the ELL teachers and then also parent referrals. From that point, students that all of that data is put on a giant spreadsheet. And then the GRT, myself and the school administrator will meet and look at all of that information. So we call that the school-based screening meeting. From there, that's where we flag students. So we look at students who have that aptitude or ability we believe may have an aptitude or an academic. Ability that requires differentiated service. So from there, we would move them into the assessment process and that requires a parent. Or guardian permission. So we would send a letter home to that parent asking for permission to provide additional assessments to their student because that isn't a typical school-based data. That we're collecting. Parents fill out a scale, a Rinzouli scale. Joseph Rinzouli is a gifted expert. So they fill out a scale telling us what their child is like at home. Teachers fill out scales based on what how the student is performing in the classroom. And then we also administer either ability or achievement data as needed, depending on what is already available from school. Then we move that to a division-based identification committee that's made up of school-based administrators from across the county, secondary and primary. Gifted resource teachers and myself, and we take each of those children's files and look at them with a holistic view. We usually, like you saw earlier, look at about eighty students. It takes us the better part of a day to look at each of those students' files. And really think of that student as a whole person and what would be best for that student and their learning. From there, students are either identified as gifted, not identified as gifted, or placed on monitor status because we think we would like more information about that child. And then we will set a timeline for that. That can be as short as three months or as long as twelve months to allow that child more time to grow. And for us to collect more data about that student. From there, then the student, a parent would receive a letter either saying what the decision was, yes or no. And then if the decision is yes, we ask the parents' permission to serve that student. We never want to do anything without their guardian's approval. The ways we communicate these processes with parents through our website, so that's the link on the left. We also have this graphic that. I made in Google Drawings in twenty sixteen and it shows, so I'm working on innovating that a little bit more. And then we also have a Google Doc with that as well, so just trying to meet everybody's needs on how they can interpret that information. So each of those are links in your in your slide deck for you to be able to go to those in a larger view. Mrs. Franklin here is the future initiatives, so get ready. The first thing I really want to do next year is open up more lines of communication with parents, guardians, community members. By hosting open houses at our schools for parents to attend, either virtually or in person. I think in the past, we have felt like maybe we need to hide it. I'm not sure why we felt that way. But I don't. So I think as as clear and as open as we can be about our process, about what gifted services look like for children and how, you know, people can access these. Is going to be best for all students. So hosting open houses for newly identified families and for also families that are interested. Again, trying to do as much professional development for teachers. Teachers are our first line of of interaction with students. And so if our teachers are well educated in what it means to be gifted and how to serve those students, then we're gonna have a better chance of finding all of our our clients here. And MCPS gifted resource teachers, while we have eleven now, which is amazing, thank you for that. There's only eleven of us and close to ten thousand students, right? So if we can educate our teachers, then we can do better for all students. And as I mentioned last time, trying to come up with some kind of informational video, informational interactive graphics, some way that we can. Put these little snippets out to the community so that everyone has access in a way that is best for them. We also are working on a first grade enrichment series, and this is what I wanted to to speak with you, Ms. Franklin, about is that. How could you be successful in gifted screening if you've never been taught to think that way? You've never had access to that type of thinking. So our staff this year, because we have that extra staff member, we're gonna be able to reach every first grade student is my hope. Twice a month, the gifted resource teacher is gonna go into each first grade classroom and teach a critical and creative thinking lesson, twenty thirty minute lesson. Exposing all students to that kind of that different type of thinking, not that, you know, academic thinking, but that creative, critical thinking. And also showing classroom teachers that that type of thinking is accessible to all students. And that every student can benefit from those kind of lessons. And so hopefully by us going in and modeling those and co-teaching those with classroom teachers. Every student is gonna benefit in that classroom. Then when we get to the screening process in second grade, every student has had that chance to learn that type of thinking, that type of demonstrating of their thinking. So that everyone is in a level playing field. I just I want our process to be as equitable and accessible as possible, and that is my first way of of tackling that. And then finally, making sure we are using assessments that all students can find accessible. So in the past, we've used something called the COGAD, the cognitive abilities test, which is a wonderful abilities test. It has a lot of reading and it's all in English and that's not accessible to all of our students. And so this past year, we piloted something called the Naglieri General Ability Test. The entire test is non-verbal, even the directions. And so you can see here an example of what some of those questions look like. So while we're still assessing a student's verbal, quantitative and non-verbal thinking skills, they require no English in order to demonstrate that. And so we've had a lot of success this year using that with some of our lower English students or our lower readers for them to be able to demonstrate their cognitive abilities.
Well, you've checked off.
Check, check?
There's only one more.
Okay, keep going.
So the translation piece, thank you so much. Are making it non-verbal. The. Opportunities to go into community. Because there are folks who don't have access to open houses. And being able to identify places where folks will come.
Right.
And engage, you know, a lot of times that means pizza really brings people out, food.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would love to pick your brain on what would like where would the best place be to start with that? Maybe you and I have a conversation later. I don't know if you know about Joy Davis Lawson, but that is just and on her heart is to make sure that all students have access. And she talks a lot about going to community centers and going to churches. So as all residents of different parts of Montgomery County, you know, I can speak very well to Blacksburg, but that's my very small bubble. So if anyone has other places that would welcome me coming into it, or you think that the two of us could go together, I would really appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll talk.
Yeah, I would love that.
Thank you for the for the presentation. To pick up on one of the comments from a community member, are there concerns about moving to a different grading scheme? That some feel is more, I mean, there's a debate whether it's more subjective or less subjective.
Yeah.
Do you have thoughts about that grading scheme?
I like it just because it breaks it down into those individual pieces. Gifted students are functioning two plus grade levels ahead, so I would think that hopefully they would be showing, you know, meets or above standard for each of those. We don't typically use classroom grades as part of our, you know, it's a piece of data. It's not one that fits into our schema of like this child is gifted or not. Same with SOL scores because that's just based on like what they're learning at that grade level. We're really looking for opportunities where they're thinking above and beyond their classmates. That's why MAP is so helpful because it goes up through twelfth grade. So I can look at that and see, oh, well, MAP says this child has a readiness for eighth grade math and they're in second grade. Clearly, we have things we need to meet. For that child, so. Not as I take my gifted hat off and put my parent hat on. I think that the standards-based grading has a lot of potential. I I hear what that gentleman said. Agreed, there's there's always pros and cons, but I don't feel like that fits into the gifted screening process.
Okay, thanks.
As a concern that I have.
Okay, that's understandable. One of the things that I've heard is concern about. Twice exceptional students and that we're not doing very well by them so that it's on either end. So they may be gifted, they're not getting IEPs because they're doing well versus versus kids who have IEPs. Who aren't being identified as gift like.
Hundred percent.
So how is how can we allay concerns from parents who've expressed concerns to me that there's a problem in the district in this area?
Yeah, it's so tricky. From personal experience, I will say I have sat in on numerous IEP and five oh four meetings. On that end where the child has already been identified as gifted and I sat in as an advocate for that child and said, here's his ability testing. He has the aptitude to be functioning at ninety eighth percentile. You're saying, oh, well, he's getting eighties, he's fine. No. Like, that's a big difference. So there is some kind of issue there and I've been able to sit there and advocate and say like, this child does need a five oh four or an IEP because he's not working up to his potential. The concern that I have and it's it's one that I'm constantly trying to keep in mind is when that disability is masking their abilities. How can I collect data to show that they do have that aptitude when their disability is the thing that's at the forefront of everyone's mind? I will say I've had a lot of luck when they if they do get through the IEP process, they are being given ability testing and then suddenly that case manager is like, wow, they scored in the ninetieth percentile on spatial reasoning. Perhaps we have a dual exceptionality here. So making sure that we have close working relationships with those special ed case managers so that we're sharing that data. Communicating to parents that they have always have that opportunity to refer their students so that we can then dig a little bit deeper. I've had good luck with parents bringing in like private testing so that they can show, you know, here, this private counselor showed that on, you know, specifically like the WISK is one that private testing often does. They are showing these aptitudes and that can allow us to have that conversation and say perhaps we need to dig a little bit deeper. We're never gonna catch all the kids because it's not a perfect system. But I I can promise you and I can promise those parents that are concerned that it is at the forefront of my mind. Again, that that's another piece of diversity in our in our program that we need to continue to work towards and be aware of. And just me doing as much learning as I can so that I can be an advocate for all those kids.
I appreciate that. I think it's one thing to be able to do it interpersonally. It's another thing to do it programmatically and across the the entire division. And I'd love to see some more visibility on that issue because it's been expressed to me and and I thought I know a little bit about.
Yeah.
The challenges and we're seeing more kids with ADHD and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other and that's just gonna increase. So I would love to see more visibility and what we're doing across the division for those families and children, but thank you.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Key board, we'll keep going around. Ms. Parton, any questions or comments?
No, thank you for the presentation and the information.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Purcell?
It's really just more of a of a comment. I had a conversation with Mrs. Flynn at Gilbert Linkus. Several months ago and she had just mentioned kind of on, you know, a conversation goes all over the place. When she was a teacher, how powerful it was for her to have co-collaborated with the gifted educator and it really kind of opened up her her mind. How to reach her diverse classroom of students, all different, all different ways. So I just really appreciate your efforts of expanding. That for our students here. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. One comment. What slide is this? Slide twelve. You mentioned it when talking with Dr. Getchy. Parents have a ability to insert themselves into this process to have students be evaluated. It wasn't so clear in the presentation, so making that material public. Maybe I missed it. Was it in there somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, down here under number one where it says parent referrals. So a parent always has the right to refer their child for additional screening.
Yeah, so so keeping that pointed out and then also talking to parents of. Students that have IEPs and that just because they're they have a. They may have difficulty in one. one subject matter, they may be gifted in another subject matter, and to keep an eye out on that.
Yeah, the twice-exceptional brain is super interesting. Like, the way our information passes between the left and right hemisphere is totally different with a twice-exceptional brain. So this kid needs special, special services.
Yep. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin? Anything else? You good?
Awesome. I want to say thank you as well, and it's, it's a great presentation. You know, I love kind of the fresh ideas that you're bringing, you know, thinking outside the box, trying to find ways to improve. That's, that's how we get better as a school district. So, so thank you for, for doing that, and I look forward to, to future updates.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
All right. Next up, Dr. Barbara Wickham, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and several members of the Strategic Plan Team will present an update of the strategic plan. This is a presentation, no action expected.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the board, Dr. Bragan. This evening, we would like to update you on our progress towards accomplishing our results statements in our strategic plan. Multiple strategic plan team members are here this evening to provide updates on the section of the plan that they've helped develop or have worked on in some way. So it took about 40 slides to show all portions of our plan. In an attempt to help you quickly see what has been accomplished, we color-coded the action steps. Green means fully implemented, that's supposed to be yellow, that's partially implemented, and then the red, of course, not yet implemented. There are a variety of reasons why it might not yet be implemented, including we just haven't gotten to it yet, and it might be coming up next year. Asterisk means that there needs to be an adjustment to that portion of the plan. Because there are 40 slides or so, it's our goal not to read them to you, but to give you the highlights for each section. For instruction, professional development, a PD committee was established. The work of the admin of professional development was shifted to some of our PD experts, our admins of curriculum, and we're working to create a process for evaluating PD, and that's what you see there in yellow. Develop a division-wide plan to advance the learning of our educators. We have fully implemented that. For professional development, implementing, monitoring, and revising the plan, we do that each year. Currently working on that now. And for lesson planning, Jennifer Waller, Administrator of Math, is going to speak to the next portion of our plan.
Thank you. Our next result statement focuses on supporting strategic lesson planning to ensure that instruction, feedback, and assessment align with student needs and division goals. We've implemented all of the action steps for this result statement. Hiring recess aides for elementary schools and bringing back the team planning period for middle schools allowed MCPS to provide an average of 75 to 80 minutes of planning for teachers. Curriculum admins have worked with teams of educators to ensure that teachers have access to a variety of resources to support their instruction. PLC teams have been meeting to analyze data and share instructional and intervention strategies with the goal of increasing student achievement. In the coming years, we will continue our work of aligning formative and summative assessments to the cognitive level of the standards of learning, as new standards are implemented in reading and math next school year and in history and social science the following year. In alignment with our engagement action plan, we spent time this school year implementing professional development on the engaging qualities listed in our strategic plan. As we refined our model for professional development, we began having school teams consisting of a principal and teacher work together to determine how to implement the PD in the best way for their schools. We will continue to focus on providing relevant learning experiences for students that integrate the five Cs from our strategic plan, which are critical and creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and building connections. Our future work within the engagement action plan will focus on analyzing our current homework and grading practices and suggesting revisions to appropriate policies as needed. The final result statement in the engagement action plan speaks to learning experiences that promote wellness and balance. We've begun addressing this by seeking ways to allow all students to be involved in extracurricular activities and providing structured time within the school day for extended learning activities. In the future, we will gather feedback from students and parents about assignments and provide strategies and tools to support extended learning at home. We continue providing professional development opportunities and trauma-informed practices, cultural responsiveness, and growth mindset.
I have the section on our action plans for recruit and hire, and there's three particular focus areas. The first one focuses on our efforts and our progress to enhance our induction and employee support programs. So most of these, you can see, we're, we're making progress in these areas. A big part of the work we've done over the last two years is related to collecting data from our employees. So we've worked with some of our administrators who are doing research on their doctorate to collect surveys and stay interviews from a large number of our employees, and that has really given us very valuable information in terms of understanding the things that are important to our employees that will help us enhance our support programs for them. So we've been able to, to identify important trends in this data. For example, we know that relationships are really important to our employees, both relationships with staff, but also with students. We know that time is valuable. We know that pay matters, but we also know that employees see the benefits, see the, the importance of having a strong benefits program. So this is information that we can use as we proceed and go forward and improve and enhance our induction programs. Part of our induction process is having a robust mentor program. So we have a mentor program in place, and again, we get a lot of data from that mentor program through feedback forms. So going forward, we want to continue to use that data and that feedback to work with the committee. So much of the work we're going to be doing this summer and into the fall is to form a committee that is going to focus on what this data is telling us and how we can continue to move our induction and support programs forward, and in a way that is valuable to our employees. The next section of recruit and hire focuses on what we are doing to recruit highly qualified personnel. So we have some areas where we have fully implemented and some areas where we're still implementing. In the area of, of participating in a variety of recruitment events, we've greatly increased the number of recruitment events that we participate in as a school division, and these include probably over 20 events that we've done this year. Some of these are job fairs, some of these are community events that we attend, some of them are events with universities, in which we go to career-focused events at universities. We've also looked at expanding our, our interaction with different community groups. So we've worked with the Chamber of Commerce, Onward NRV, the Montgomery County Blacksburg Christiansburg Regional Tourism Office, because we have found that part of recruiting people is not just giving them information about the school division, but also bringing them in so they know more about our area and what makes the newer valley a great place to be. We've also extended our use of recruiting platforms. So we are posting jobs on things like LinkedIn, Indeed, and Handshake, which gives us more connections to universities. And we're also in the process of implementing a new screening and recruiting tool called Leadline. And so we're hoping that that's going to help us may be more visible and more accessible to potential employees who are out there. One of our goals going forward is to really focus on tapping into our student teachers more, and also working with some of our programs like Teach for Tomorrow in our schools so that we can build more of a pipeline in our, in our, in our schools to kind of grow our own programs. And then, of course, we'll continue to look for pathways, alternative pathways to licensure when our fourth year of our AMPS program, which is our program that allows us to help provisionally license teachers through our, our home program to earn their license. And then this year, we're also piloting the video, through the VDOE, what's called I Teach Virginia. And this is going to be a great opportunity for us to offer pairs the opportunity to earn a license. The third section of recruit and retain focuses on our, our efforts to increase retention. So again, a lot of this is data-driven. For the last two years, we have collected and analyzed and looked at information salary data from surrounding school divisions, as well as school divisions that are similar to us. And this has allowed us to focus on where we need to make improvements and enhancements in, in our salaries and in, in our benefits. Last year, we did a classified salary study, which did result in a lot of changes to placement of our classified staff. We have also expanded the use of our minority retention committee. One of the goals of the strategic plan is to increase the diversity of our workforce, and so part of that has been using the minority retention committee. We, this year, we have increased the capacity of that community by increasing its membership, but also the number of meetings and events that we hold. So we've had eight meetings this year, and they have served a variety of purposes, but we've partnered with the department, with Equity and Diversity with this committee so that it has served as a forum, so that we can get feedback and information from our minority employees, but it's also a platform for people to build connections and to attend social events. And so that, that's been an important, that's been an important place for us, just to be able to engage more of our employees and get information that helps us know what we are doing to, to retain a more diverse population. So going forward, we really just want to focus on gathering, continuing to gather data that will help us focus on building our efforts to retain our employees. Thank you.
Learning environments, the safety-specific portion of learning environments. As you all are aware, the renovations at Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary, and Bellevue Elementary Schools have been completed. Development of a master facilities plan is still on the to-do list. The traffic flow study has been completed, and MCPS has worked to expand pre-K programs specifically within the Auburn community.
You can see that we have updated our safety practices for our countywide departments. Just a side note from some of these that we have done for our safety and security, we have currently upgraded our camera servers, so that gives us more retention, and we are adding cameras to our system as well to increase our coverage. And this summer, we are also increasing the number of key card access to our exterior doors to try to discourage people from propping doors open because there is not a way back in. So we're trying to do that as well. You can see that we also, as a common theme, as Mr. Harris continues to come on board, he will continue to develop the facilities master plan, which a lot of these are contingent upon. So as he continues to develop that document, you will see many of these items on our slides that are currently red, that have not been completed. We'll continue to go into the yellow and green as we move forward.
Thank you. The accessibility portion of the learning environments plan is primarily focused on the facility use process. A revamped facility use process was completed in spring and summer of 2023 and was implemented during the 2023, 2024 school year. Next up is poverty.
Good evening. So Adam Simpson and I are here to speak with you about the, the focus area of poverty. And here, where we have our district will systemize the intake and distribution of information services and resources donated by the community partners. So far, we have developed a family resource center, and we will continue to organize and make it more user-friendly as resources to our families. We have computers available at each of our schools for families during open hours, and through this availability, families can register if they needed with assistance. And community partners have been established, and we continue to work with our collaborations there. So in this area of poverty, where the schools will systemize the collection and distribution of information and services to students through our school counselors. Counselors have been named certain liaisons at each school to help ensure families are receiving all the information that they need. And the schools are also maintaining a resource document available to their families, and they have that in both hard copy and digital format. Right now, the registration hotline is still in process, and that should be something that we should be getting established in the coming years. In this area of poverty, the collaborating group of stakeholders will be established. The community of partners and MCPS will work together to create and review, update, implement programs and services to meet the growing needs of our students. So here, we have, like I said before, developed a family resource center, and we will continue to organize and make it more user-friendly. We are still in the process to create a community resource list per strand. We have a different list at each school, but once that list has, for the strands are, are created, we are going to then share that out to all the stakeholders. Partners have been established through the Early Childhood Network, which allows collaboration between many organizations, organizations such as private preschools, agencies, and other organizations. And work has been done to create flyers on school readiness, and that has been distributed throughout our community. And we are very close to finalizing a single point of contact to help disseminate information and connect with families. One thing that has been created is a birth-to-five hub through our ready region, and this has been established so that families can work to get access to many resources. These resources are such, things such as agencies that they can tap into, to get services, preschool opportunities, parent engagement information, as well as other resources.
Also, under the focus area of poverty, MCPS has an action plan related to relationship building. As we all know, building relationships with our students and families is foundational to everything we do. Schools have worked intentionally to design evening events, such as back-to-school nights, open houses, and curriculum nights, to serve the needs of their students and families. Many schools have also planned and organized outreach events in some of the local neighborhoods over the summer and at the beginning of the school year to help with registration, to provide needed school supplies, and to connect families with other school and community resources. MCPS is still working on developing a more formalized procedure that monitors implementation of and documenting attendance at these community events. At the beginning of the school year, our administrators of curriculum designed professional development for new teachers on meeting the needs, meeting the learning needs of students from poverty. This PD was also offered to all teachers in the division during the spring semester. The subsequent bullets are in yellow because we are still working on expanding those PD offerings on this topic. Once the PD is more fully developed and delivered across the division, principals will be able to monitor the implementation of the strategies learned by teachers, as well as provide support to teachers who need it in this area. Another goal related to relationship building is to communicate with families in a confidential and dignified manner. As we reviewed this, we felt that perhaps all of the steps could be green because this is something that we strive to do every day as we interact with families. However, the team chose to leave the first three action steps in yellow because there's always room for growth and improvement when it comes to identifying and removing barriers for our students and families. This work, this is work that truly never ends. As you can see, the transportation piece is in yellow because the division has explored this in the past and has yet to fully implement an after-school activity bus due to financial And this last slide shows action steps related to before and after-school care that have not been implemented yet, as they were scheduled to be executed in year four of the strategic plan, which is next school year. And turn it back over to Ms. Altiser.
So this last area of poverty is under the area of early childhood. As you could see, we have really worked hard and accomplished a lot here in this area. So for our expansion, we have been able to provide mixed-delivery preschool slots and three private providers in our area, and this allows the children in these facilities to receive wraparound care. An additional four-year-old classroom has been added, and that allows us to serve 18 more students and families, and that's in the Auburn District. One three-year-old classroom was added last year. This is serving 15 students and families, and this is at Price's Fork. And we have intentions to add one additional three-year-old classroom in the coming year. We're in process, we're waiting on VDOE to definitely approve the allocated slots to us.
This first slide. The Department of Equity and Diversity has established equity leads at each school who work at the building level. Our equity leads lead the student equity cabinets at each school, and the Equity Advisory Committee consists of parents and community stakeholders who meet once a quarter to discuss issues, policies, and problems with an equity focus. We are continuing to work on fully implementing school-based equity teams. The Department of Equity and Diversity has established equity leads at each school who The Department of Equity and Diversity continues to provide learning opportunities on cultural awareness, implicit bias, and deficit thinking. We must continue to provide professional learning opportunities, and when I say "we", I mean Montgomery County team, on poverty disciplining, social, emotional learning, and trauma responsiveness. MCPS does well with the cultural cafes or socia's as we work as a team with Dr. Widener from Human Resources and the Minority Retention Committee to plan four events per year. There needs to be more focus on identifying and utilizing practice of inclusion for all county employees feeling welcomed, appreciated, and supported. Also, we must continue to work to attract and retain staff that reflects and embraces our students' diversity. Montgomery County Public Schools has expanded our APDE courses to be offered at all high schools in the division. However, as you can see, most of this work is in red because it is future work that we have not completed as of yet. Also, with access to courses, you can see here, once again, it is future work. However, we have made some progress as indicated by the yellow highlights on our current policies and procedures. And once again, this is future work as we work with our high schools to align expectations for our AP and dual enrollment courses. The Office of Equity and Diversity has provided professional development to teachers on cultural sensitivity and respect for diversity. We will continue to work with principals and teachers for the implementation of culturally responsive teaching for all students. As you can see here, we have some work to do in this area of developing and implementing programs and practices to meet the needs of all students and their families and to help them feel connected and supported. Yet, there are implementation in two areas as indicated by the green. Expanding the Virginia Preschool Initiative and Local Pre-K Program to increase the number of students being served is an area in which we have made a lot of progress. We have met the first four bullets and continue working on the last three. We are continuing to work to analyze discipline data and identify specific interventions to address disproportionality. This is a division focus for next year. The existing discipline policies and practices were changed to align to the current VDOE model guidance for positive and preventative code of student policy and alternatives to suspension during the 2022-23 school year. However, we need to revisit the work and implementation of the level systems of disciplinary responses while continuing to work on this area of behavior management. Utilizing positive behavior, positive behavior interventions and supports, PBIS, is an area that we continue to work on. As you can see, we need to provide professional development on restorative practices. This is one area with the equity statement that we have fully implemented. And it is posted, the equity statement is posted in all areas of the school, posted on the webpage, and included in the parent registration packets.
Good evening. The mental health section of the strategic plan is organized into three broad categories. The first category you see on this slide is training. You will notice that a lot of this slide is in yellow. Much of this work was done this school year and is tracking toward being fully implemented at the beginning of next school year. In the area of training, I think our team is very excited to share that we're beginning to incorporate mental health themes, mental health topics. From the time we interview candidate teachers on into their training as pre-service teachers as they come aboard in Montgomery County, we want to stress that, that mental health, we believe mental health is important, not just to our students, but also to the adults in our division, our staff as well. We continue that on in some other portions when we talk about the required PD components to keep your license. We talk about how we believe that some of those PD opportunities should also be in the areas of mental health. So from the day we sit down at the interview table to talk about bringing you aboard, we want this on your mind onward on to, into the rest of your career. The last component I would point out on this slide is down at the bottom, as the board is very familiar. We've worked quite a bit this year on adopting an SEL curriculum, which the board approved just a few weeks ago. We're looking forward to implementing that curriculum at the beginning of next year. The second theme that I would share coming out of this section of the strategic plan is networking. We are very proud of the relationships we have, the working relationships we have with a lot of our community organizations such as New River Valley Community Services, National Counseling Group, Department of Social Services, and even law enforcement that can really help us in this area as well. We're very proud of those and enjoy those partnerships. We actually live in a place that's very blessed to have these organizations and have these resources. And we like to do our best to bring those opportunities, bring those to bear on the needs in our division. You will see, we do have one yellow section there that's kind of large. That's one that's going to take a little more work, not quite completed, and it's going to carry us into next year. And that's talking about mentorships. We do have a number of mentorship programs in various schools. It's kind of a school-by-school project at this time. We've got some work to do next year to really kind of bring that in together under one big MCPS umbrella in terms of talking about our expectations, our processes for bringing aboard those mentors, and then what is going to be expected in those relationships between mentor and student. Our third component is education. We're very pleased, again, with some of these partnerships we have that we're able to continue to teach some programs such as Teen Mental Health First Aid or Say It Out Loud, DoNAMI. We also are very pleased that we provide each year a presentation to our students. It started as our secondary students where we provide them with a presentation that shares, "These are the resources available to you as one of our students if you find that you need help or want support." We actually have taken that a step further and kind of taken that material and brought it down a little bit to a more appropriate level for our elementary students. So our elementary students get that presentation as well at a, in a way that's more age-appropriate to them. Also, we, you see, we do still have some yellow on this sheet as well, on this slide, I should say. We do implement those themed events. We feel like we still have some room to grow there in terms of bringing students aboard. We feel like that's an important part of that action step is that students are with us along the way as we plan these activities and events. So while we're doing those things, we understand and know that we still have some room to grow in that area of letting our students have some control, autonomy, leadership in those, in those practices. I believe, that's the last slide from me. Dr. Wickham.
What questions do you all have for the team?
Let me just start real quickly by saying, great job getting through that very dense presentation in under 30 minutes. Great job. Clearly a team effort there. Lot of information, I love the color coding, that really helped. So with that said, I will open it up to the board who has questions and comments. Let's start. Who's going to be the bracer? Here we go.
Go ahead. Yes, thank you all. There was a lot in this plan. So going through this, I like to look at data. So if somebody asks me, "What are we doing in this area? Are we accomplishing our goals?" The only thing I could say is, "Well, it's green so that I know that we're doing it." Like there are some areas where I was like, "How do I actually know what we're doing or how we're doing it?" So there's like, there's no data. I'm kind of a data person. There are multiple committees that are mentioned here, like the PD Committee, Professional Development Committee. Who's chairing that committee? Who's on that committee? How often does it meet?
Yes, great question. A couple of questions there. So there is a monitoring tool. So each year, first question, each year the team comes together, we meet multiple times throughout the year, and at every meeting, we have a running document where we link in evidence. So we've decided, for example, this is the results statement that we're going to tackle. These are the action steps. And then we have a monitoring process where we link in documents to show progress or evidence that those steps have been met. So that's something we'd be happy to share with the team. In terms of-
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
In terms of the PD committee, much of that work was done in the first year or two that the committee was asked to do. So a lot of those things that you saw in green, they've been accomplished. The one part that you saw there, that evaluation process, is something that we've started, but will need to reassemble the committee for the upcoming school year. And that's something that myself and admins of curriculum will do in leading that committee.
Okay. And so some of the other committees, how do you, how does the community know that these committees exist? Because there are multiple, like the Mental Health Advisory Committee. How does the community even know? Like who's on this committee? What does it do?
Great question. So one of the things that we do every school year, we have a Google form that we put on the website and we ask, we put it out there, we advertise it, and we encourage people to sign up for committees. And so people go in, select committees, and then we go there and we start to look for members who have been interested in that. And then that's kind of how we start selecting those members. From there, then we keep a list of those members. We have, again, another document where we link in who our committee members are, what the scope of the work is for the year, and that's something we'd be happy to share as well. But that's a really good question. I don't know that it's published. I think it's something that, again, you can sign up for it, it's on the website, but I don't know that any of them are, are public knowledge.
Yeah, because I did go to the MCPS website. There's a tab for committees, there's a little bit of text, nothing about the actual committee. So I did see that form, but you'd have to know. And I'm bringing this up because one of the things I've heard is about not as much, that there needs to be more engagement with the community and communication with the, and so even here you're saying, "There's forms, we've got all of this, but it's behind, it feels like it's behind a wallet." I would love for you to open that up so not only the board can look at that data, but so that the community can look at the MCPS website at any time. Be like, "I'm interested in mental health," for instance. Be like, "This is a committee, this is when it meets, this is who chairs it, this is who's on it." And I think that would be really valuable for the community at any time to be able to access some of this information.
I think that's a great idea and that's something we can work with Andrew Webb on to help us get that on our website for each of our committees.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
The board will go around. Ms. Pardon?
So Barbara, thank you so much, and the entire team, you guys have done a phenomenal job. I'm excited because I was here when this whole first thing started. So I was on the board and got to be a part of the initial strategic plan when the board and superintendent decided that we needed to implement something like this. So to see how it has evolved in the last three, almost four years, and everything that we've done, just incredible. So the PowerPoint was great, loved the color coding because that helped me keep everything straight. Thank you guys for all of your time and your input. I know it's been a whole lot of work, so it is very much appreciative. I know we have done some great things, I know we still have a lot of things to do. But it's just exciting to see this moving forward since I was there for the initial process and I believe in a committee with Jason Garrison, if I do recall, about four years ago. So anyway, it's just been wonderful to be a part of that process. And I did have one thing I do, I have heard time and time again, not only from parents, but in some of our school board hearings when we've been talking to some students about some things and trying to help them, is that I think it's great how we push for our after-school, not only our after-school, but our post-graduation, things that they can do such as college. So the ACE program is becoming extremely big here in our area. And I just don't feel like that, that's something we need to be extremely proud of because it is growing, and I mean growing. And it's a fantastic opportunity for, for parents and kids who don't think they're going to have that opportunity for a college education. But it doesn't seem like it's getting pushed the way it needs to be because a lot of the times, parents look at us like a deer in the headlights and they're like, "I don't know what you're talking about and these kids are juniors." And I'm like, "You haven't heard about ACE in school." So I don't know where we're losing that, but that might be, personally, that just needs to be something I feel like we need to figure out what we're doing as to why these kids are coming in and parents and they're not knowing anything about this when they're a junior. Everything else, it seems like from what I can remember, we're on track. Has there been any different allocations since we started? I know back then, things have changed a lot since we did prioritize what we wanted to work on. Have we changed anything, Barbara, as far as the prioritization according to what we started? And I know we meet year to year, I think, to decide if that's what we want to continue or do we want to change it? I just couldn't figure out from this, because it's been so long ago, if there was any main shift in that or not.
Couple of things there, great question. We did end up, you know, occasionally we'll have a results statement that we're working on and we don't complete all the action steps and then we'll, we call it kicking the can down the road to the next year, but we also know that we're going to run out of time. So we have had to punt a couple of things and I'll defer to the team. Was there anything major that you guys can recall that we flipped in the order of how we had originally said we were going to? Anything? Yes, sir, come on up.
I don't necessarily remember any specifics, but also having been around from the beginning, I know there were a number of things that we did end up moving from year one and two just because we were in the middle of COVID. And there were a number of things that we just kind of had to move to year three and four. And I was reminded of a couple of those when we were going through the slides.
And I appreciate the feedback about ACE program. We want to make sure that we talk to our secondary principals and our counselors about that. You're absolutely right. What a great program.
Yeah, it's just so beneficial. I just, it doesn't seem like, for whatever reason, we're communicating that. Like we need to get better about communicating that and help New River because it's such a phenomenal thing for our, for our students.
Sounds like something we need to get in all of our newsletters next year as well and start working on that. Thank you for that feedback.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Rousseau?
Thank you, and I'll just echo what other board members have already said. Just thank you so much for this really informative presentation and the both thorough yet swift way you moved through a lot of information. I really, really appreciate that. I think it is very cool and clever. Dr. Widener of how you're encouraging staff members who are maybe working on doctoral degrees and need to do some data collection to leverage that to better inform how we can, we can make improvements. That would be a data point that I might be interested in, just seeing if there's anything at a policy level that we might need to think about changing, implementing, strengthening, that kind of thing. The only other, other comment I'll make is that I didn't realize that we were teaching mental health first aid and I'm really glad that that's available. So thank you.
Dr. Ratri?
Yeah, great presentation, lots of material, very quickly, appreciate it. For the mentors for students, how are mentors going to be selected?
That, that's one of the issues, right? And as far as Dr. Wickham talking about, like that's actually one we wanted to get done earlier. And when we got into it, said, "Yeah, we're going to have to move this back a little bit because we do have some schools already, particularly some of those that are closer to Virginia Tech." because we do have some schools already, particularly some of those that are closer to Virginia Tech, who, who have kind of more people kind of already involved, already connected. And we don't want to step on anybody's toes, but, but we also kind of dig into it a little bit and really kind of defining what is a mentor and what is, you know, just kind of a big brother, big sister? Is that the same thing? You know, some of these sometimes are coming from the university, even sometimes coming from the high schools to the elementary schools. We're trying to get some community service hours, which is great. Kind of filtering through all of that to say, what is that long-lasting partnership that we would like to see between maybe an adult, but maybe also just an older student as well? To be able to say, this is someone that a young student can, can look up to, can, can get some help from, can become maybe a trusted partner that's just different from some of those other people at the schools. So getting in and kind of picking the part and filtering through all of that is kind of what slowed us down in getting that done. So I, I know I'm giving an incomplete answer because it's still yellow on the slide.
Right.
But, but that's exactly one of the topics that, that we're trying to get addressed and be able to implement countywide.
Right.
Does, does that get at it?
That gets at it. Yep. And I know, I really appreciate the, getting students involved in that process, too. I know at my, the elementary school I'm associated with, fifth graders going in and helping out with second and first graders. They, they really love that activity on both sides.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay. So yeah, I was involved with this and was just thrilled at the level of community involvement and across the district, all levels of involvement. Thought it was a great process. And then all the committees that went after that, hours and hours and hours of work went into this plan. The color coding, very interesting. And I appreciate the presentation, but I do have some concerns. So with our equity leads and the committees that are being formed in the schools, how successful are we being with that?
With our equity leads and our school-based committees, we are not as successful as we hope to be. We've been, we don't have the buy-in as much as we would hope, but that is something that we're really going to be focusing on, on this year, coming up. And also with our equity leads, we are looking at how can we kind of revamp that a little bit? Because we had been using the IE periods. And what we're coming up against right now is that some of the schools are doing away with IE period and IE time. And so trying to give an opportunity for things to happen during the school year is becoming more problematic.
So across the district, I'll just make this statement. When we're looking at trying to get our messages out into the community, are we using translations?
Yes.
Material that's going out with everything?
Yes.
Okay. And is it being put in places where our folks have access to, besides the web?
Yes. We are, I mean, and I'm just speaking on the, the equity part. But I know that Mrs. Wright has made sure that all of our parent information has been translated. And so we are putting that out, we're doing it on the web, but we're also sending things home and making it available within the schools for the schools to, to send home.
Great. So I'll just get to this. So last week, and I've been given permission to speak to this, the board received a letter from a, at this point, former employee outlining some of the stuff that they had to deal with while in Montgomery County Schools. And it was, a lot of words I can use to describe. It was disappointing, is unbelievable. It was unbelievable with all the work that we say we're doing. And yet we have an employee who endured the kind of treatment that she did, not in just one community, but in another community. And how that was from the students to administrators, how this person was treated, or should I say mistreated? But yet we say all this work is happening and all the development that we're trying to do with folks, but yet still folks feel that they're able to treat people in a way that is so disrespectful and based on your race, because of the color of your skin. I do not have to treat you in a way that is respectful and dignified. And if this is what's happening to our adults, imagine what's happening to our students. So when we look at our discipline, when we look at our disparities in learning, when we look at absenteeism, and then you get what you believe is not happening anymore or folks understand I shouldn't be acting in these ways or saying the things that I say. Where are we at? I mean, the pretty colors, the great things that we say we're doing, but when it hits the road, that's not happening. That is not happening. Not only this individual, but others, folks who have been speaking to me, especially this year, about how they're feeling they're being treated in Montgomery County Schools. And they feel it is basically because of the color of their skin. This is wrong. And we need to face up to it, stop talking about what we're going to do and what we have implemented, and start doing accountability as to what is and what is not happening. Because again, as disturbing as this was to hear about it happening to an adult, thinking about what the students are going to, going through, because they're in many ways helpless as to what happens to them. So I want to hear about accountability. And I want to see us open up some kind of path where our students and their parents can communicate what's happening, what their experience is in Montgomery County Schools. Because they don't feel that now. And I remember when I first became involved with the school system and it was around the disparities in discipline. And parents were made to feel that their child's situation wasn't isolated, and this was isolated. But when we came together and started talking to each other, it was like, hmm, this is not isolated because this happened to my child, my child, my child. So when we're now still talking about the same issues and what we've done to move past that, we haven't. And these are our children that we are talking about, and it needs to stop, needs to stop. We're talking, I think it was seven, eight pages, letter that came to the board with the resignation letter, talking about what's happening in our schools. And it directly relates to our strategic plan. So if we say we're going to be doing these things, then we need to have the accountability and honestly having the conversations about what is and what isn't. Because hearing administrators not understand microaggressions and still having the African-American teachers come in and talk to the African-Americans, African-American students, because I don't know how to communicate. But we're supposed to be building relationships. So that's where I am with this tonight.
Well, I will tell you that we are working on it. Mrs. Wright and myself meet every other week now with Dr. Bregan. We are really focusing on disproportionality. We're focusing on accountability and we're focusing in on outcomes. And we will, we're starting with a book with the leadership team that we are ordering on disproportionality. We're bringing in other folks and we're, and for the 24, 25 school year, we're going to be working with principals on that. And we are looking at other areas also.
I so appreciate the work, but I'm gonna tell you how many times I've heard that.
I understand.
So it's the accountability piece-
Yep.
-across the district at all levels included in this plan and anything else that we do in this district. Quite frankly, the racism, the bigotry, it needs to stop. The abuse, it needs to stop.
I totally agree.
And I'm not just talking African-American students. I'm talking minority students. I'm talking about our students who live in poverty across the board. If you don't fit a certain mold, you can be treated differently, not given the same opportunities. And it needs to stop.
And we do need people to come and tell us-
Absolutely.
-when things are happening so that we can go in and investigate and move forward with what we need to move forward. It's really hard when we find out after the effect at the end of the year or whatever, and then they say, I didn't want to because of retaliation. And that's one of the big things is trust and retaliation. We've got to get people to understand, if you don't come forward, there's nothing we can do about it. So.
I hear it all the time. It's even offering to come to meetings with folks, whether it be parents or even administrators, to talk about how we do things better and stop what is happening, but folks are afraid.
They are very afraid.
And that's, that's a shame. But unless people speak up, like this unfortunately former employee did, and it wasn't after the fact, we don't know. And if we, as a board, don't understand when folks come forward and what is being done to help correct situations, then we're left in the dark.
Right. Anything else?
I guess I had a couple of questions as well, I guess. You know, as you're, as I'm trying to digest the entirety, I've been kind of looking for trends, particularly in areas where there's, there's big, there's big areas of red. So as some presenters had noted, on, on some pages, a lot of those areas of red were places that we just hadn't gotten to yet and kind of that part of the plan. There were a couple of pages that I saw a lot of red that that wasn't noted. So I just wanted to see if that was, if that was a different reason. So in particular, on page 12, I don't know if you can get back there or not. This was on instruction engagement. 12 and 13 in particular, those pages were, were pretty red. I was wondering if that was just another place where we haven't gotten to that portion of the plan yet or?
So this year, we, you're right, we haven't gotten to that portion of the, of the plan yet. We worked on engaging strategies, but for this upcoming school year, one of the things that we're going to be looking at is grading and homework policy. So that's coming up hopefully for this upcoming school year.
Okay. Because certainly as, as I think about the areas of this plan that, that touch our students the most, that's certainly a section that, that kind of jumps out at you, right? Because that's affecting their, their daily lives. And I guess, you know, again, just how my brain works, other areas that are interesting to me when they jump out is when there's kind of a scattering of, of progress and maybe not progress because that's clearly an area where we're, we are working on, but maybe we haven't gotten all the way yet. And so another page that jumped out to me was on page 35. This was, this was down in the equity section there on the behavior management. That one's kind of all over the place. I was curious if there's anything else we could talk to about what we're doing there, what we can do better, and how the board can help, if anything?
I think this is, this is probably a tricky one. And Gally would like to come back up. We've implemented, is this the right page?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have done some, some PD related to behavior management, but I think that's the next slide. There's just definitely more work to be done. Here's some work was started and then delayed. So is this upcoming school year that we were going to tackle more of this?
Yes. And as I said earlier, we had started with our discipline matrix and aligning with the VDOE. But because of some staffing changes and all, then that got kind of put by the wayside. And so that's one of the things that we need to bring back next year. And we are going to be doing some PD on behavior management and working. So that's going to be with the disproportionality, the work, all of that is going to go with, with the discipline.
Okay.
Behavior management.
Great, great, yeah. Again, those are the useful things for us as we're considering organizational structures and hiring decisions, stuff like that, right? If those decisions are impacting our ability to execute on the plan, that's, that's important for us to know. So.
Well, and I do, I do think that the, the new, or bringing back the director of, I forget the title, but bringing back that position that works very closely with equity is, is going to be a good thing. And then we'll be able to push more of this work forward.
Okay. Great, thank you. Board, any other questions? We've gone around once. Any, anything else? Okay, great. Thank you so much. That was a very involved presentation. I appreciate all the, the time there to answer questions. And it's great progress. Still work to be done. All right. Dr. Wickham, don't go far now. Next up, Dr. Barbara Wickham, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will present the Division Literacy Plan for Review. The plan will be brought back on June 18th for approval. This is a presentation and only no action expected tonight.
Okay. So the purpose of this presentation is to share the MCPS birth through grade 12 literacy plan and present the components of the plan that must be submitted to the VDOE. And we will seek your approval on the plan at the next board meeting. So what does the Code of Virginia say about a division-wide literacy plan? We're required to have a plan for grades pre-K through eight. Use the VDOE template to submit the plan. Provide literacy PD for our staff. Use evidence-based literacy curriculum and instruction. Include our parents in supporting literacy development in their children and post the plan to our website. So this evening, I'm going to share with you the tale of two plans. It was the best of times, but perhaps not the worst of times. On August 4th, 2021, we began long-range planning for reading and writing instruction and intervention to address achievement gaps. In the meantime, we heard that a law was going to be passed requiring a plan, but as a division, we didn't want to wait. We felt like we needed to move forward with this work. Then, over a year later, we received the superintendent's memo about the Virginia Literacy Act. So however, the first template for what would be required to be in that plan was not released until this year, January 2024. So I want to walk you through a timeline of how the work started and the journey to where we are now. On August 4th, 2021, a group of SBO administrators, former teachers and school administrators met to discuss some of the academic struggles that our students were experiencing. We conducted a root cause analysis to dig into that. And what we see and what we know is that many of the struggles are related to not being able to read proficiently. So we decided that we needed a pre-K through grade 12 plan to address reading and writing. to address reading and writing. So on September 22nd, we came back together. We started to collect and review guidance documents. In October, we identified essential components of what we thought should be in a plan. Then we looked at templates. We came back together. We kind of landed on a template that the team liked. We talked about team membership and gathering more members for our team. And then at that point in time, we decided that we needed to change the plan from pre-K to birth. Language and literacy start well before children ever enter the school, just like we heard during our public address tonight. In March, we extended invitation to multiple members to grow our committee. And then in April, we put the work on hold because at that point in time, we still had not gotten the information from the VDOE about what that plan would need to look like. In August 2022, we did receive information about the Virginia Literacy Act and we began to solicit committee members again for our division literacy team. We moved from there to have our first literacy team meeting. We talked about the VLA, what it meant. We then met again to look at VDOE updates. We started to investigate an example of a plan. We analyzed examples of goals. And at our fifth meeting, we continued a little bit of information, continued to pour out. And at that meeting, we had some additional information about the Virginia Literacy Act expanding to go from fifth grade up to eighth grade. We looked at Virginia literacy partnerships, updates, and then we continued to work on our goals. At the end of the previous school year and again in August, we solicited members again for our literacy team. In October, we had a literacy team meeting to discuss updates from the VDOE. And we really wanted to talk about our why, revisit our why. We had started that work so long ago, why are we doing this work? In December, met again, looked at our goals, continued to develop our why. Then in January, like I mentioned, the template was finally released and we were able to see what it was that we truly needed to or would be required to have in our plan. In the meantime, in February, the VDOE said, we are going to now provide training on how to develop a literacy plan that we had already worked on for a good while. So the first training was on February 21st. We attended that. It was about leading change and crafting a vision. We brought that work back to the team. And then we worked on the vision and aligning the Virginia Literacy Act template and the MCPS templates and our action steps of how we would get the work done. Second semester of this school year, things really started to roll pretty quickly. In March, at that point in time, we shared the draft with all of our principals. We asked them to take that back and collect feedback from their staff. March 13th, there was a second VDOE training about high-quality instructional materials. In April, the literacy team met again. We took the plan, we started to reshape it again based on that training from the VDOE and the feedback we were receiving. You can see later that month, there were two more trainings, training on successful, high-quality materials, instructional materials and VLA implementation, and then collaborative planning structures. How do you take those materials? How do you use those plan, those to make sure that you're teaching the standards? We brought that back again to the literacy team. We took in all of that information and we revised and finalized the plan based on feedback from the VDOE professional development, from our principals, from our staff members, from community members. We had put a little survey on the website to just ask for some feedback. And we took all of that as a team and used that to shape our plan. And here we have our plan, the elements of our, our literacy plan. I'd like for us to be able to take a look at section one. Tosh, can you click on that for me? Thank you. So here you can see in section one, we have our vision. As you go through those statements, it talks about literacy practices, making sure that students have an opportunity to read and interact with a variety of texts. We talk about just developing those necessary skills to read, write, speak and listen, utilizing evidence-based literacy instruction, providing PD for teachers, partnering with our families and other stakeholders. And then again, making sure that teachers have high-quality instructional materials in all of our classrooms. So Tosh, I think you might have to scroll down if we could go to our next section. Thank you. So section two.
Tosh could zoom on that just a little bit. Sorry, that's a little hard for folks in there.
So section two, literacy goals. We started out with gosh, around, I don't know, 13, 14 goals. We kept going back to this to narrow this down. And again, once we had our training from the VDOE, we wanted to make sure that our goals were matching the requirements. And for the most part, they were. So Tosh, if you could scroll down a little bit. Section three, selecting high-quality instructional materials. As you go through here, again, we have all of our goals laid out. We have our action steps and we also speak to the use of our high-quality instructional materials. So it speaks to rigor, engaging opportunities for students. Giving access to PD, again, that's part of the requirement, making sure that teachers have PD in the science of how children learn to read. Making sure again that teachers and students have access to evidence-based literacy curriculum and all instructional materials and resources. Again, providing families with access to resources to support literacy development. Using multiple sources of data to inform instruction to make sure that we're differentiating based on students' needs. Making sure that our master schedules are created to provide adequate time for English instruction for our students. Making sure that our students have opportunities to learn from general ed teachers, special ed teachers, reading professionals, whoever that adult is that they need in order to be successful. Adopting and developing purposeful assessment processes to determine students' deficits and strengths. From there, the next section that we were required to have in our plan, of course, we had already talked about this. How do we make sure that this plan is working? So we have a variety of assessments that you'll see here. Again, our plan spans birth to grade 12. So a lot of assessments here, but making sure that we're using those assessments, looking at that data, analyzing it and digging it in to make sure that what we're doing is actually working and adjusting instruction if it's not. Tosh, you are doing great. So in addition to looking at are our students being successful, then it's also how are we doing overall as a division? So you'll see many of the same assessments listed there. And this section, engaging parents and community, one of the things that we're required to do with the plan is to make sure that students that are struggling reading below grade level, that they have a reading plan. And this describes some ways that the committee felt like we could really engage our families to talk to them to make sure that they understood those plans. And then again, the second paragraph there speaks to just some different activities to make sure that we're engaging our families in the educational process. Thank you, ma'am. All right, and if you could click on the division literacy plan real quick. You can see that it has six sections there. There is nothing different in this plan than from the plan we developed. This is just the template that we're required to submit. We made sure that we aligned these components with our plan. We moved those over into this template. So the big difference is that the plan that the team created, we have more steps about how to get there. But these are the things that we have to submit to the state. Thank you, ma'am. And then the last thing that I'd just like to do is acknowledge the 52-plus administrators, teachers, reading specialists, coaches, parents, everybody who worked on this plan. It spanned multiple years to get to where we are. I wish they could have been here tonight so that we could recognize them in person. It was a lot of meetings and a lot of work and a lot of time. And also just want to give a special thanks to Tricia Metzl, who is here tonight. She consistently received information, shared that information and helped us use that information from the VDOE to shape the plan. And she also worked to make the document user-friendly and pretty. So, thank you. What questions do you have?
Board, any questions? Who wants to start? Anybody over here want to start? Hey, Ed, you have any questions?
I do. Thank you. I, first, I understand, I, I understand the VDOE has put a lot on the divisions plate and a lot of work went into this. So I want to acknowledge that first and foremost. So one of the questions I have, I have two to start with. One is, our current policy, 6-5.5 textbook instructional materials, compliant with the Code of Virginia? Is it compliant, including with the addition of the Literacy Act?
So are you asking if the high-quality instructional materials that are listed are compliant with the Code of Virginia?
No, just, I want to know if our board policy, as it is written, continues to be compliant with the Code of Virginia?
That's a good question. I would have to take a look at that.
Okay. I believe that it is, that it's, it remains compliant. And one of the things that, well, I'll get, get to this in a moment. Is HQIM defined in the Code of Virginia? Is it delineated in the same way that, for instance, textbooks are, are defined? Is it defined in the Code of Virginia?
I don't know if high-quality instructional materials is defined in the Code of Virginia, but I know that that's, that's obviously the language that the VDOE is used in terms of the Virginia Literacy Act.
Yeah. So I'm asking those two questions because I'm, I'm great, I'm very concerned about what, the VOD, VDOE has gone way beyond what's in the actual act. And one of my concerns is that, you know, I ran against book banning and I know that there are a number of reactionary politicians who are using the science of reading to basically impose book banning. And as I'm reading some of the language, even in the template, I'm, I'm very concerned because it is moving in the direction of completely stripping autonomy in the decision-making from, from individual teachers. And I could, I mean, if, if you're a libertarian in this division, if you're a conservative, this should, this should scare the bejesus out of you because there's language in here that basically you should be able to walk into any classroom and everyone's doing the same thing at the same time, almost. I mean, the language is almost that precise. So I understand that we have to do, that you have to do this. I know when it comes to supplementary materials, that it says to be determined. So I have a feeling that this is going to need to come back before us if there's going to be a process in place. But I just have to say that I'm concerned. I do believe that we're, we're compliant right now with our current policy. And I want assurances from the administration that we're going to continue to adhere to that policy as long as it's school board policy. So can you provide assurances to our teachers and our community that that is our policy? It is not in, out of compliance with either the act or other elements of the Code of the Virginia and that we're going to be adhering to that, to that policy? Can I get that assurance this evening as we move forward?
So my understanding and being at the training, not, not reading what you've read, but what the VDOE trainers shared with us.
Yeah.
One of the training sessions was related to collaborative planning. And one of the things that they talked about at this training was the importance of taking that high-quality instructional material, that curriculum that you adopt that's been approved, sitting down with a team of teachers and having them go through, compare that with the standards of learning, dig into the standards, look at your student data to make sure that nobody can teach everything that's in a curriculum. And there's no company that I'm aware of off the top of my head that creates a curriculum aligned to Virginia's standards because we're the only state that has standards of learning. So with that being said, teams were encouraged to actively, yes, look at the curriculum, but also plan from the standards and plan from your students in terms of supplemental and intervention materials to take a look then, what do students need and what else do you need to bring in? At no time was it my interpretation, yes, if you're going to teach from it, you should use your, your primary curriculum to do so. But in terms of reaching individual students, it was never my understanding that you couldn't bring in other materials like books and having, you know, book boxes and book cloth. And that's something that I know that Ms. Metzl had talked about to teachers as well, is being able to keep books in your classroom that children can have access to. So that's my assurance right now, that that is what I've heard, that we are not saying that you can only use this. Did I answer your question?
So you can affirmatively say to the community, to the school board and to our teachers, that 655 is still our policy and will continue to be until the board changes it. So you can say that this evening?
I can say that is my understanding at this moment at 9:40 PM.
Okay. And I say it because that, that term HQIM, the acronym that's being used is really alighting distinctions that are important in the Code of Virginia and, and basically folding supplemental materials and whatever else that you want to designate under a textbook and under that category and making it go through the same procedure. And the VDOE is very careful in the language to know that they can't actually do, they can't replace that. And so that's one of the reasons I'm asking for that assurance is because I think the VDOE has gone way beyond its authority under the Virginia Literacy Act and what they're requiring of divisions. And I, I want to make sure that teachers, and, and I know reading some of the, the guidance from VDOE, they do say that a school board can put in their plan that teachers can select novels or other books for instruction in their classroom. Because VDOE knows that they cannot exclude, they cannot bar teachers from doing that, that school board, because there was, what are we doing here? As a school board, VDOE just hands everything down just to say, this is what you've got to do. And you don't have a choice. Well, I think the school board does have a choice. I want to, I want to respect the autonomy of our teachers and they'll stop right there.
And again, I do want to just emphasize, and recently this question came up at a principals' meeting last week and we were asked about removing old materials from classrooms. And yes, we're no longer using the primary curriculum, but in terms of the books and the leveled readers and the decodables and all those extras, why wouldn't we want to put books in the hands of children? Books are books. So, so far at this point in time, folks have been told, we keep our books in the classroom. Our children need to have access, one of our goals, to a variety of texts.
Yes, thank you. I agree.
Can you board go around? I'm gonna change the order though, Ms. Franklin? Awesome. Uh, Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, again, Dr. Gitry, thank you for expressing the, the autonomy of our teachers in such an eloquent way. I appreciate it. I don't have any other additional questions on the guidance. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Proust?
I don't have any other additional questions, but I do appreciate Dr. Gitry's line of inquiry and Dr. Wickham's answer. So thank you.
Ms. Pardon?
Thank you, Dr. Wickham. I don't have any questions, but I appreciate the presentation and all your hard work.
Thank you.
And I'll just echo that. Definitely appreciate the, the pulling together of all this information. There's a lot in here, all the sublinks and stuff. Again, great job getting through all of it in a short amount of time. And, you know, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next up, the 2023-24 Enrollment Report is provided for information and discussion. This was linked in your board docs. Not sure if, yeah, sure. Not sure if there's anything necessary to present here, but certainly answer questions. And Ms. Franklin, this was, this was intended to be in response to a request that you had, but I'm not sure if this is what you were asking for or not. So just wanted to get it out there for, for discussion. And if there's something else we need to look at instead, we can do that. Good, Dr. Bragan, if you had anything you wanted to?
Yeah, we get this monthly. We put it together. So I thought it, you know, when the question was just, you know, what is the enrollment, what's the current enrollment? I think it's good if we put this on a monthly board meeting just for reference purposes, put it out there. You know, the demographic study we did a short while ago said our enrollment is somewhat stable, should be slightly declining over time, which is a little surprising if you remember when we did that presentation. So, it's been reflective of that for the year I've been here, so a year and a half I've been here. So, I think it's a good idea if the board agrees. We'll just include this every month in one of our meetings, and it's a good point of reference moving forward.
Board, any questions or comments about the one we see tonight? I think if it's not a heavy lift, I think this is another good data point for us, just to kind of see where we are in the division. Ms. Franklin, any questions or comments on this right now? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next up, Dr. Amanda Widener, our Director of Human Resources, will present the MCPS staffing update.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, board members, Dr. Breggin. I would like to give you an update on the status of our current vacancies for both our certified and our classified positions and our progress in filling those positions. Just begin by giving you kind of a look at our vacancies by category, so you can see those are broken down. So, as of today, those are the vacancies we have for administrator positions, our elementary certified, secondary certified, special education certified, and then our classified positions. This is a breakdown of our administrator vacancies. And again, these are administrator vacancies at the central office. Some of these, you saw last month when I spoke to you, and some of these are new. So, our director of finance position, the good news is we do have a candidate that we are bringing forward for you to approve tonight. Our most recent position is our budget analyst, finance manager. So, that's a new vacancy that we will be working to fulfill. I think you're aware that our supervisor of payroll position was recently vacated. However, we have been contracting that position out, which has been very helpful in this transition. We are currently accepting applications for a director of secondary. In the interview process, we're coordinator of special education. And through the org chart that you approved at our last meeting, there are two new positions that we will be looking to fill, director of student support and intervention, and also coordinator of Title IX. Later on in the presentation, we'll get a chance to let you ask questions. Postings and job descriptions of those positions were shared with you, and so those are there for you to review and ask any questions about tonight. These are our school administrator employee vacancies. So, these are vacancies in our buildings for principals and assistant principals. We have filled a number of those, as you can see, and they are in the hiring process for others. These are our vacancies for elementary certified, and I would like to say we've made a lot of progress here. We have filled 21 positions in our elementary schools, and these are positions for the start of the new school year. I think when I met with you in May, we had 11 filled positions. So, we have filled 10 positions since then, and even with that, we have nine candidates that are currently in the process of being recommended or who are recommended. So, that leaves us just with six open positions in our elementary schools. And for this time of the year, that's a really good place for us to be. Classroom teachers, we currently have three open positions. So, we've been working diligently, and our principals have been doing, very engaged in the process of screening applications and engaging in interviews and bringing forth candidates to recommend to fill those positions. On the secondary side, so again, this covers our middle schools and our high schools. We've also covered a lot of ground here. I think in May, when I reported to you, we had filled about 21 positions. So, now we've filled about 35 positions in our middle and high schools. We still have 13 and a half open positions. And again, there are 10 current candidates who have been recommended. So, we are making a good deal of progress there. And again, most of our open positions are in the area of core teacher and elective teacher. But again, we're still early in the summer, so I feel confident that we'll be able to work towards filling those positions. Special education, again, we've also made some good progress here. We have now filled 13 special education teacher positions with six candidates who are recommended. So, currently, we have four vacancies in the area of special education teachers. Our biggest critical shortage is for our speech-language pathologist positions. We do currently have four vacancies. So, that has been our hardest to fill. And we're also still trying to fill two positions for school psychologists. So, in the area of special education, at this time, we have 10 open positions. But again, special education is a critical shortage area, not just for Montgomery County, but across the state of Virginia and certainly across the nation. Those have been hard-to-fill positions. We did implement through the budget. So, again, thank you for your work in approving the budget, but the budget that was approved had money put in place for incentive pay. And so, one thing that we have put in place, and we are advertising that, is a $1,500 stipend for all of our certified special education. That includes teachers, speech pathologists, our school psychologists, as well as our therapists, our certified therapists. So, we're hoping that that incentive may attract some new candidates. Moving on to the classified side in our Department of Facilities, we're still looking to fill, we've got those three open HVAC positions. Good news is, we do have new applicants, so we do have interviews scheduled there. Grounds maintenance, we're looking to, continuing to look for applicants there. And I anticipate that for our next meeting. Mr. Harris, our Director of Facilities, has been working with Dr. Brewster, our Assistant Director of HR, and they've been coming up with a proposal to consolidate some of those positions and use that money to make some adjustments to the pay scale for those positions. So, I think that proposal will come forward at the next board meeting. We're in pretty good shape next year for bus drivers. We just have two 4.25 position, 2.4, 4.25-hour positions to fill. We are looking to still fill a fleet technician mechanic. That's another area. Eddie Walters, our Director of Transportation, has also been working with Dr. Brewster. This has been a very hard-to-fill position, and so there will also be a proposal coming forward about how to make some adjustments there to the pay scale that may hopefully attract some new candidates. All right, we're excited that we have a candidate recommended for our executive administrative assistant board clerk. We are still looking to fill a nurse, a floating nurse position. And then you'll see, we do currently have a number of pair positions open for next year. That's fairly typical this time of year at the conclusion of the school year. Sometimes we get people leaving, but, you know, we'll have an opportunity this summer. I'm sure we will probably do a recruitment fair in either late June or early July to try to fill those positions. As you know, through the budget, we've expanded the hours for pairs to 7.5 hours, which means an increase in pay. We've already seen some new applicants since that's happened. So, even though we do have a number of vacancies now, many of those are vacancies because of new positions that have been added based on student need and student numbers. So, we hope that we are still early enough in the summer that we'll be able to fill those. You'll see that we do have three recommended candidates for special education pairs, two for preschool, and also two for early literacy. And then the last slide is additional classified employee vacancies, so lunch recess aides. Again, those are typically positions at the end of the school year. It's not uncommon. Many of those positions are filled by college students who may be leaving and not coming back next year. So, we have seven positions our principals will be working on filling. And then among our custodians, we currently have seven elementary custodian positions and four at the secondary level. So, we've definitely got some work there to do this summer, trying to fill some custodian positions. Can I answer any questions for you about specific vacancies or areas of need?
Board, any questions on this section before we move on? Okay.
Dr. Breggin, did we need to address the job descriptions for the, that were shared?
Yeah, if we could share those. Do you have those to pull up? As we talked about at the reorg, when we did the reorg chart, we had two job descriptions that we were developing. One is a Title IX coordinator that we'd like to put out there as soon as possible. And the other one was a director of behavioral supports and interventions to work with some of our students that are struggling with behavior and kind of coordinate that with our building-level administration. The idea for that position is based on a previous position, but there is a twist on it. We want it to be more proactive in identifying students who are maybe are at risk or are struggling but haven't got to the point now where they're coming to the front of the school board or being disciplined. And, you know, we kind of know who our students are that are struggling, and if we could put more proactive measures, kind of aligned to some of the strategic plan stuff that Ms. Woodsetzer said about our positive behavior intervention supports and doing all that ahead of time, that to have somebody dedicated to coordinate that with our buildings, I think will be really effective and bring less of our students that get in significant trouble that come to us for discipline hearings. So, that's the goal. That's a little tweak. It's a little bit different. And as you can see, we're trying to advertise the positions a little more eye-catching and make it more enticing for people to apply. So, those are the two positions we want to put out, and, you know, we'd like to put those out as soon as possible.
Board, any questions or comments about those two positions? I know we're talking about the title of the second one here. I feel like that title is consistent with some similar positions I've seen in other districts, so that's good. Board, anything else here before we move on?
I just have one small suggestion for the Title IX. In a couple of places, it says just, it says sexual and gender-based harassment, and under like the investigation, it just says sexual. I would say wherever it says sexual, it also say gender-based, just to be consistent, because I know that's what the guidance is coming down now on Title IX, that it includes both. So, just for consistency, I would make that...
We can make that change.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, board. Next up is capital transfer and appropriation. Do I have a motion to authorize a request to the Board of Supervisors for capital project transfer of $358,757 and a supplemental appropriation to the 23-24 school operating budget of $1,216,545 from SRR3 funds? It's a lot of numbers to read.
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion carries. Okay, board, we are now up to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business? Okay. Are there any items of new business? Derek, your mic is hot. You're making me nervous. Okay, cool. Okay. Are there any announcements?
Well...
I haven't. Go ahead.
So, last week, New River celebrated 10 years of the ACE program, and it was a wonderful program that evening, and doing a simultaneous viewing of the PBS, I guess, documentary that they did on the program here in the New River Valley. And again, just a wonderful program. The folks who helped develop that, and I'll always give a shout out to Chief Wilson for him taking the bull by the horns with this and stepping up repeatedly to help implement that program and get it going. And I'll say again, that program came directly out of the Dalagón race. When talking about barriers to, for students to law enforcement, the conversation went around, but what about the barrier for all students to education? So, again, just a wonderful program. And out of the box, just thinking how we advertise that more is we've got billboards and we have signage that we can put up along the road sides. You know, it happens with political stuff, so I'm sure we can put it up too, to help folks draw attention to this program. Because we have, especially some areas of the county where they're just oblivious to what is happening with this program. And in translate it so that all of our students and their families will be able to understand what this opportunity is, because two years of free community college is a game changer for generations. Can't speak enough to, you know, drop them from an airplane, a helicopter, something, flyers, to let folks know this is available.
On May 29th, Dr. Breggin, Mrs. Fotinos, and I were a part of the first meeting to help establish the New River Valley Governor's School for the Arts and Humanities, which will be a project with Radford University. I really appreciate Dr. Breggin and Mr. Hudson for, including me, in this group. It's extremely exciting for students who are interested in the visual and performing arts and the humanities to be able to take classes at Radford University as part of this governor's school. Yeah, it's really exciting, and I look forward to further developments and being able to update the board.
Thank you for not saying no. Board, any more announcements?
Just one update as a liaison to the town council here in Blacksburg. I worked, had discussions with the mayor, you know, on the gun safety program. One of the things I've been in communication with her about is the vaping problem. I know that other board members have reached out to town council. One of the things I'm trying to figure out is who is actually responsible for enforcing the law prohibiting the sale of vaping devices? And it's a little hard to get an answer to that question. But I'm engaged, as so is Ms. Purcell on this, to try to help tackle this problem. I know that the board has talked about it, but I'd encourage also for you, Dana, to reach out to the Christiansburg Town Council and to whatever we can do... What's that?
I've had personnel with the mayor and somebody other...
I believe you. I believe you. But whatever we can do to help tackle this problem from multiple fronts, I think is really just sorely needed.
Good, thank you. Couldn't agree more. Okay, board, upcoming school board meetings, as we know, we have our next, our last one in June is on the 18th, and then that'll be our last one until the end of July, when we get going again for the next school year. And... Last scheduled so far. All right, cool. Next up, do I have a motion entered into closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss two personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
In favor?
Motion carries. We're in closed session.